Okay. So we have, would you like to see Tess? Chris is gonna sit there because she's taking minutes. Grab us, grab the seat over here. Let me do this. And ultimately, we will have our selectmen's conference room updated for soon. Okay, instead of everybody looking at all the pores in my face. Okay.
She told me to sit here.
I put you there so you can, so people can see you.
Should I just give them the test? My keys?
All right, I'm gonna start the meeting if that's okay. Are we in a good place? Chris, you might want to take your seat. Chris, once you sit down, I'm gonna start the meeting. I'm sorry. Okay. Call the order at 7:03. We have all selectmen are present. We also have Tess Gross, selectman-elect. Okay. Hear from public. Anybody want to speak from a public perspective? Okay, acceptance of the minutes of the special meeting of October 31st. Oh, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved for selectmen's briefing. Okay. Ashford School roof grill, the Garland warranty issues have all been resolved. Final payments are being confirmed and we anticipate making those final payments next week. Solar project Garland requirements to protect the warranty during solar installation are being added to the RFP. We're making sure that we have all the right protections in there. We've spoken to Garland about what they need to be involved with, and so we're adding that. It's a simple add. The old post office, I just wanted to mention in passing, we've had it cleaned top to bottom professionally by our cleaning, our hired cleaning crew. So it's the windows, the floors, the facilities, and the windows were so dirty, you could not see through them before. So it's bright, clean looking in there, and the floor has now been stripped and polished. So that's in good order. Okay, Public Works employee retirement. Dave Tivault retired effective Sunday, November 9th. And the open position is being posted.
Will you do anything to, for the position in the transfer station or?
Not yet. We're in discussions about it. We want to do that next. Right now, we're in discussions about it and what that on position, you know, in terms of the level of supervisory accountability that person has. So we've already updated the job description a little bit to reflect that, and then we will post the position. New Emergency Management Director, Kristen Winott. She lives in town. She's a longtime Emergency Management Directors, Michael Gardner and Thomas Borgman have laid out a training schedule and will assist Ms. Winott during her transition to this critical town role. She's already hopping to go and very eager to start the training. The Five Town Veterans Day Ceremony that was held at E.O. Smith on November 8th with special honors for Vietnam-era veterans. Unfortunately, the Eastford, Ashford, and Union certificates have to be revised, reissued. They were printed with Representative Nuccio's name listed on them instead of Representative Boyd's. And the Wellington certificates need to be reissued because they had Representative Boyd's name instead of Representative Nuccio.
But ours were right.
No.
Oh.
They were actually the opposite of what they should be. Um, I was a bit disappointed. I was a bit disappointed Senator Gordon did not come to the Ashford table to where we had, we were giving out Vietnam honors to our Vietnam veterans. We had quite a few there. It was a lovely, well-managed event. Train Tracer Symphony System Upgrade. Bill, you'll know what this is. We need an upgrade in training to manage the town office building's HVAC system. We are having difficulty. I've never had training. I've read the technical manual, but it's not necessarily the version for our, our system. And on the, and neither has Casey, our Public Works Director, has access to the system, the two, for select and the Public Works Director. He really hasn't worked with the system at all. We need the training and we need the upgrade. So included in that, $1,000 for the upgrade. And then the full service contract is $5,358 annually. That's what was quoted a few months ago.
How much?
$5,358 annually. You need to understand, we paid 2,600, I think it was, for them to come out for two service calls, and we still didn't get everything solved. And that includes, by the way, that I'm sorry? Other options?
Are there any other options other than train?
More expensive. You'd have to have them take out everything. They're hooked into the system. It's the original system for this place. I mean, and they also said, in a perfect world, our, our system up there, all around, physical system, is, you know, is as old as the building. So it's something that we need to worry about going forward as to how well that's gonna hold up. So.
Is it, can I ask questions or should I wait?
Sorry?
Can I ask questions or should I wait?
Uh, you can ask a question on this, of course.
So if it's a train system, if I'm understanding correctly, and is that a maintenance? Or is that, do we have to get bids on that?
Is how, um, well, if we were going up, no, the train system, for $5,000 annually, you wouldn't go to bid on that.
Okay, got it.
Um, the, um, the other part of this is, is that you need to understand, it controls all the air, all the heat, all the cool.
Yep.
It also has an aspect of it that indicates, and I could have sworn that before I was able to control some of the lights out here, like the parking lot lights. Um, I can't get at that anymore. And I've looked and looked and tried and tried. Another example is I get from the different offices, I hear, oh, it's way too cold in here. Find out that it is and go to change it. Gets a little awkward. But I had a situation where people were going to be using the large conference room this past Sunday for an event they had down there, and I needed to have the heat turned on in there for them. I had to go and try and find the schedules, which I could find, but nothing that went past the week. I had to come jury-rigged to get to where I needed to, to put in an exception for that period of time. And I'm pretty sure it worked, but I was here after hours trying to figure out how to do that. If I had some training, it'd be a whole lot easier. And I, and to tell you the truth, I don't want to screw up the system when I change settings. That's the big thing for me.
I don't think any of us have been overly satisfied with training or service.
I would agree.
Problem with them. I had a problem, you've had problems in the past with them.
Roughly problems with them, and we've had we've had problems with the system since the building opened. Um, most of the time, they were able to fix the problems. Years, they didn't have any heat. So they finally had to replace some kind of pressure relief valve.
Yes.
In most of the baseboard.
I mean, we had problems in the conference room across the hall.
We still do.
Also in the registrar's office, we've had ongoing problems. I don't know how many times we've had them try to address it.
Well.
Maybe it's time to shop.
Right now, I've got cold people in this building, okay, and trying to get
Where's the come?
I'd like you to walk into the finance office, even with me having it turned up. It's still going cool. So this is a one-year contract, okay? That gives us time to, first of all, to get it upgraded, to get everything fixed. They can do remote. They could do an inspection. They do a remote inspection. They can connect to it, like, um, online where we can't, we don't have any of that right now. None of it, not even the inspections. But the, it's not really connectable online from where they are, so they have to come out. And every time they come out, it's $400 an hour. It's extreme. I will tell you that the last few people, the people I've interacted with who've actually come out, except for one particular character that we all know, those people have been very polite, very, you know, they're very informative. One of them worked with Brandon, who works in, you know, in Public Works, walking around up there, working out whatever needed to be done. So, um, you know, from my perspective, it's worth the one-year investment in order to give us time to figure out what to do. Right now, I have, I have issues with trying to get the rooms heated to the right temperature. And at one point in time, it took a long time to get the rattles out of the air systems. So in terms of trying to get this fixed before, we had to not only bring in train, but we also had to bring in nutmeg. Nutmeg was here for three days, okay? Couldn't figure it out. Did this, did that, did a temp, a jury-rig thing. That failed over the weekend. It was, they were here Wednesday, Thursday, and a Friday. And then train finally came in. We had to wait a few weeks for train to come in. I would rather have a service agreement that says, this is what your SLAs are, et cetera, and this is what we will cover.
But I can remember, you probably did too, we had terrible noise outside the elevator.
That's the rattling I'm talking, oh, it's been in this room. It's been all over.
I mean, it was ridiculous.
It's fixed.
It took them six months to figure out there was a bad motor up there between the two of them.
The two different companies?
Yeah.
That's what's frustrating. It's not like we're experts in this. It's we are hiring the people. They're supposed to be the experts.
Is this the information?
There's right there.
So can I take, can I look at this?
I sure can.
Um, while you're on that subject, I know you've heard, I guess we have at least one neighbor in the back that's very unhappy about the lights.
Actually, let me clarify that for you, okay? The lights went on the night before the election.
Yep.
I got a text from our electrician.
Okay.
No, not train. I got a text from Alex because he put the lights up. I don't know about you, but I didn't expect them to be quite that tall or quite that bright.
I, I was shocked.
We, yeah. So I went, walked over, looked out, texted him back, and I just went, wow, that's bright, and let it go with that and said, thank you. The next morning, I got a very, very polite, rather lengthy, but polite text from some people who live behind here.
Katie.
Sorry?
I think her name is Katie. I don't know her by all.
Yeah, I think so too. But anyway, a very, very nice text and saying, you know, hey, it looked like a baseball field over here at night. And so what I did was I told her that the next night, because it had just gone on, that that night, I would try and set the timer so that they would go off. And what I had said was, maybe we could have a, she called it a compromise. And I, because I didn't know we could turn down. They have three settings. Yeah, they were at the brightest settings. So the compromise was that, you know, we have meetings here at night and that they could probably go off at nine o'clock. Okay, figuring, close to that. And, and maybe not be on on weekend nights. So what happened was I was still here at 11:30, working with the dial downstairs. I don't know if you've ever worked with that? Okay, I had to work with it before, and that controls the lights outside supposedly. Because I couldn't find it in the train system anymore. It will actually say in the train system what time they go on, but what's needed to change it is grayed out. And I looked at, you know, through the manual and everything, so I was here late. Had to have my husband come with a pair of needle-nose pliers to delicately change the timing thing. And I set it for going on at 4:30 and going off at about nine or 9:30. And what happened is it didn't work. The next night, it didn't work. So I've been in contact with these people. We were texting each other. What I did do was I asked Casey, I talked to Casey about it, and he said, there's actually three switches on those lights.
Three.
And they're set at the three settings. They're set at the brightest. So I asked, I said, is there a way we can get it down to the dimmest, so we can see what that looks like? And he couldn't do it right away because the load, the lift wasn't available. But he went out on might have been Thursday or Friday of last week, and dimmed them. They are dimmer, and the people out there recognized it. But we still need to do something about this. He also, Casey doesn't want the lights off all, all night. You know, he wants them on till like midnight. Um, that's a debate, you know, if they're really needed to be on. And I think that these other ones, the ones out there on a different circuit, the old-fashioned ones. In addition, he's looking, he's looking himself at what can be done with the bulbs or whatever it is in those ones to turn them up. Because right now, they're so dim, they're useless. And we need to do something with those as well. Anyway.
I talked to him briefly, just because I was, I was curious what was going on, because she also emailed me a couple of times.
Okay.
Or texted me, Katie.
Oh, she did?
Yeah, yeah.
Did she say we were working on it? Because she's been very, very nice.
Well, I think she texted me the same time she texted you.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if Roger got one too. And I just said, have you talked to Catherine? I said, I'm sure they're on it. And then the second time, I gave Casey a call and I said, I'm sure you guys are working on it. Can you give me an update so I can respond? And he gave me that, well, he would like them on basically all night long. And I said, Casey, why? And he says, well, if we have bad weather, he says, you know, and he says, I'm also worried about security. And I said, well, Norton Hall is dark all night. Anyway, it's been forever. We haven't had an issue there.
Their lights are on. A little lights in front.
On, in the parking lots.
Oh, all right, yeah.
It's not. So I said to him, you know, if you have control, and I said, you have, should have control through your system.
That's what I thought.
And you have a blizzard, or you know your guys are gonna be working and you need light, you should be able to do that from your iPhone.
Exactly.
So anyway, I guess that's what he's talking to you about.
Right. So this is why the, I need the train upgrade, because I can't get the stuff. And they actually, I went in and looked at it from an administrative point of view. And I'm administrator from a first select point of view, so I have a certain view and capabilities. They put him down, Casey down, as like a programmer. Okay, so he would have other capabilities, but I can't see what they are, nor do I think he would be comfortable with that.
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna work with that as well. Um, but I will say, the, the people who, what I did was so, once we got them dim, I drove up and down 89 to see what it looks like from over there, and they're still too bright. So.
Look at that. I, I just think between all of us who have been at that seat and our problems with the HVAC system, you know, get you your contract, but my suggestion is consider getting somebody in here to bid it.
Yep.
There's always been a conflict between, I, I never had a problem with nutmeg. When I'd call them, they'd
Oh, nutmeg's always good, but when they came out, they could not solve the problem, and they had to come out three times.
And, and
And then I had them, had them in contact with the train people
Yep.
um, to explain what they had found, and even that was awkward with train because there's some attitude there.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I, right.
They do this.
Yeah.
This is the train system proprietor.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. Trademark everything.
So it's gonna be like the elevator in this building, which is a Schindler.
And?
That's, that was a proprietary system, and we had to go through legal hoops to be able to have Otis
Yeah.
and independent work on the Schindler elevator.
So we're not talking about that. We're talking about having someone come in and take out the train system, or else have a train take it out and put a new system in.
Revamp it.
Which is gonna be expensive.
I mean, I was told there were certain shortcuts that were made in the design of this from the very beginning.
Not surprised.
And, and
I've managed, I've managed, you know, programmers and that kind of thing, and this is all programming here. And when one of the people came out, the principal in the company came out, he was working on it. The arrogance was beyond belief, and the not being able to see what he was doing or having him explain it was not okay. And, and you know what it was like? It was like having a spaghetti, what I call a spaghetti coder, someone who just does whatever he wants without a structure to it.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be that complicated.
Nope, it doesn't. But I like the suggestion of actually looking for another company. I was just looking at, you know, we're having a tough time with finances.
I mean, I have no idea of the lifespan of the equipment we have up there, but my guess is it's nearing its end.
Well, that's what the train person said when he went up there. Again, the person was with Brandon. And when you think about doing the whole thing, and he, actually, the train person said, if you want to really do this right, you want to do that first and put the, a new train system in. So, and I don't know if we can get a steep grant for something like this. I haven't seen anything out there yet. Um, but it's a very expensive venture for the town to have to take on. At least I think it will be. I mean, that's physical infrastructure in this building.
It's a problem.
Yes, it is. All right, that's all I had in my selectmen's update. Um, any questions?
I do.
Sure.
When you first talked about warranty issues on the solar, did you have, when you were first talking about the warranty issues on the
Yes.
solar, the RFP, um, do you have numbers that go along with those, or are those somewhere?
The numbers being like money?
Yeah.
It's not money. It's, it's, it's edge-to-edge warranty for 30 years. What we had were issues, um, the issues were that they did not provide me with a sample warranty when they should have. They, um, there have been issues between the
They never got you an owner's manual.
Well, they get, with the owner's manual, there were some conflicts in it as well, and the owner's manual come, was kind of sketchy. The original warranty did not indicate there were a couple of other kinds of products that were used. They were not Garland products. So what happened is our general contractor pushed back, and there's a lot of back and forth, a lot of emails, a lot of venom between the parties. You couldn't throw cold water on them, I let them run. And what happened was the general contractor was saying, you need to have this and this and this, these kinds of products or whatever of components added up in the top of the warranty where it says what's, you know, just up at the very top. And our town council confirmed that. In fact, town council confirmed pretty much everything the general contractor was saying.
Were you ever submitted any lien releases?
Any what?
Lien releases?
Lien.
General contractor. Normally, that would come with your owner's manual. If they, well, Garland would give.
Here's, here's what happened. Okay, what happened is Garland will no longer allow Imperial on their roofs.
Are they in litigation?
I believe so. I, I
But it's not on the traditional website.
So they're not on their approved list anymore. These, we, they not only have issues here in Ashford, we just ended up in the middle of a maelstrom. We didn't create. And so they have issues in other towns where they're going back and forth.
Between those two.
Between those two and Garland. So the Garland and the architect that we had. So there are
The issues were between Garland?
This was this way.
And, and
It's, it's Garland and the architect and Imperial.
Against Imperial.
So Imperial can't even, Imperial had a three-year warranty. And it was issued by Garland, but signed by, um, Imperial, by Bruce. So that was, that's no longer valid. Instead, the 30-year warranty is what counts. That's what Garland has said. They've subsumed or whatever the, what Imperial would have done within the case of any leaks. I complained to Garland. I actually called the president of Garland and, and got him in the meeting. We had a special meeting with him, with, um, the architect and an expert on Garland's warranties, their technical guy for the warranties. On the Cindy Ford, the school superintendent, and Jim Rupert, the building committee chair, and myself. And we ironed out the issues that we have with the warranties. I complained about how they issued them. They had, they said the roof was done March something, and in reality, it wasn't really done CO, that kind of thing, until I think May, May something. So what the Garland president did, his, his name is Matt, he, um, during the meeting, he said, if you like, I will make the warranty from the May date, or it was either May or July, forward 30 years. I said, that's fine. And then he said that Imperial couldn't go on the roof anymore, and I said, I wanted him to send me a letter telling me that, because I'd only heard it verbally. And, and then I wanted him to also document the reason why. He wouldn't do that. I didn't think he would. And so they did send that. The other thing was the, we had had a situation that I think I told you both about before, where we had a leak in the roof.
Our last meeting.
Yeah, leak in the roof, and Garland prevented, really talking with, um, Mike at the school. Mike would just normally, if there's a leak in the roof, he would call Imperial, and they'd come right out. So instead, it was on a Thursday, a storm, and on Friday, there was a leak. It went down into the library.
This past Friday?
No, this was back a few weeks ago, okay?
Before our last
Went into the library, and there was a leak around the skylight. So Jeremy from Cod Gill, from, um, Garland told Mike not to call Imperial, but to call Garland. Garland set up an appointment for the following Monday. Garland then canceled the appointment. They didn't notify anybody, and they never told him why they canceled it. They just didn't show. So from my perspective, the roof wasn't done, because it's not signed off at that point, and it still isn't fully signed off.
Brand-new roof leaking.
Well, that happens. It happens in different situations. This is a big roof. One would hope it wouldn't, but it did. Okay, bottom line is wherever there was an issue, they came right out to take care of it.
Got it.
So they were good for their word. The, um, so bear with me. So Jeremy had told them, told Mike not to call Imperial, and then nobody came out to fix it. So that was brought up with the president as well. And he, because he said only Garland, you know, Garland-approved people could come out and fix it anytime there's a problem. Okay, well, what we need is, what we need is to know who they are, what their, you know, the contacts. We want, we need to know that they have gone up there, and they know what the roof is before they have to come out for the first time. So that was all, yes, they'll do that, they'll do that, and they have come out for something. The skylight was something that was not part of the roof. It was a skylight that Imperial put in. And they went out and found out that something, it wasn't something they had done. There was something that ran over somehow onto it and caused a problem. So bottom line, these companies don't like each other. Imperial can no longer go on the roof. We did not find that we got bad service from Imperial. If anything, they've been easier to We did not find that we got bad service from Imperial. If anything, they've been easier to work with than either of the other two. Uh, and the, uh, warranties have been updated, the, uh, types of materials, the types of things that needed to be clearly stated. Or stated, uh, on the warranty and it's edge-to-edge. Yes, and the maintenance is supposed to be, uh, it's maintenance that they do. Yes, sir.
Has the leak been repaired?
Yes, what I did, because, uh, bear with me, bear with me, what I did was I told Imperial. Is this project is not signed off, go fix the leak because nobody else is. And so they went and did that, they haven't gone out since. There might have been another problem, they called Garland, the person came out, fine.
Took care of it.
Took care of it. That's all I cared about was, we need somebody to make sure they get out there right away.
It's what I've heard is that leak in the library area has been ongoing.
Okay.
For a while.
Okay, have they determined where it's coming from?
That I, I don't, I don't know what, I've never heard what the cause.
Oh, you know.
I just heard that that area and, you know, where we're attached, the libraries attached, it's been ongoing even before we put a new roof on.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's what I heard.
Well, that might be something else that's a little more fundamental than a new roof leaking.
Can I ask another?
Sure.
School-related question?
Sure.
The thirty-eight thousand that. Was being held back, reimbursement for the oil tank. And we got special legislation passed that extended the time that Cindy, has that been resolved?
We don't think so. You know, I didn't see anything specific in the legislation that pointed exactly to that. Would you agree?
Well, what I was told by, by Pat Boyd.
Yeah.
And I think I also talked to Jeff about it.
Yeah.
Was that it extended the time period that Cindy could resubmit. The application for reimbursement, specifically mentioning Ash, I was told. I didn't look up the.
The legislation doesn't say that, from what I could tell.
So.
But we will go back, we'll go back, we could be, we'll go back and look at it again. I, right now, I haven't had time to work with that. Um, but that's a good point, and we'll go back to it.
You know what, and what I didn't get clear. The fire department's anniversary.
Yeah.
Oh, cause it. I didn't get clear if there was a time definite on the extension.
Right.
Or not. And then I heard Cindy was laid up again, and I don't know how that may have affected things.
Oh, no, they have, they have a, um.
Enter.
Business administrator over there. Who's working with this stuff.
Okay.
He's part-time, but his business is. But I'll do a check. And see what the status of that is. I haven't thought about it in a while.
Well, yeah.
But money is money.
It's a lot of money.
Okay, any other questions? Roof, anything else?
Me.
Okay, we're moving on. Uh, hear from boards, commissions, committees. Uh, we have nothing tonight. Uh, old business. The, um, person, um, Dan. Who is going to be our new tax collector on who we made a motion to appoint effective December first, has asked, requested. That it, we change the date to December second. That will allow him to get a couple more days of his vacation, whatever. Um, in the, um, where the, the town where he is.
I, I noticed that, you want me to withdraw my motion that I made on, at our last meeting? I will make a motion to withdraw my previous motion relating to the hiring of a tax collector.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll second it.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I will make a new motion to hire. Daniel Beltran. As our full-time tax collector. With an effective date of December second.
Very good. Uh, I need.
In accordance with the language you have here, I don't.
We'll just use the same language, thank you. Uh, and that, um.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. I know he'll appreciate it. Um. And, uh, Linda will step down as our tax collector, December first.
Have, have we talked to her about assisting temporarily or interim?
Absolutely. You need to, you need to know that she, I actually had done a bit of a reach out to, to Dan. And, um, she, uh, he's already been down there, he's seen how she's laid things out. Um, she is intending to work, I think, as like a part-time person, I think four days in December. Four days in January. Uh, we have an assistant position there, and, uh, possibly January thirty-first. February first and February second, because those are manic times, though, that's when.
Yeah.
Everything needs to be filed by. So absolutely, she has offered to do that, she's been fantastic. Uh, and, uh, we're just hoping to get her to a point, and even later on if he needs some assistance. She just wants it to be, she wants him to be successful, and she wants to make sure this is taken care of in good order, the way it should be.
Yeah, I think he was very relieved in our, our discussions with him, that he had a backup like that.
He is, I think he's a very fine person and he will be very dedicated. So.
And I know Linda will be there for us.
Sorry?
I know Linda will be there for us if we need her for something.
Very good. Um, alright, uh, new business. Set dates and times for the following winter pre-holiday town closings. Here's the issue. Convis time. The days before these holidays are Wednesdays. Pete, the day here starts at ten o'clock on Wednesdays. So, New Year, Christmas Eve. Starts at ten o'clock. When do we send them home, or do we just say, don't come in that day?
What, what's the union contract say? They get Christmas off and they get the day after Christmas?
Yep, so do we.
Well, that's what I'm talking, I mean, everybody here.
Yeah, as goes them, so go we.
What's gonna happen? This year is.
It's just that everything's on Wednesday.
So Christmas is on Thursday?
Right, so Christmas Eve Day is on Wednesday.
Thursdays, the town offices get Friday.
Okay.
Because we're typically closed on.
And highway department.
The union contract calls for the day after Christmas. So the town offices will also get Monday, the twenty-ninth.
Say that again for us, recap.
Christmas is Thursday, the twenty-fifth. Town offices, which are closed.
And they typically get that Thursday off.
Anyway. Cause we're closed.
Right.
But they get an early closing on the day before.
The union contract.
We've done it historically, but historically, the day has not been Wednesday. Which is when everybody comes in later.
What if we closed Wednesday? Just throwing this out, brainstorm. Would they work Monday?
We usually do an early closing, so you're saying for them to work part of the day on Monday?
The last time we asked the union to do that. They voted it down.
They what?
Voted it down.
Oh.
I said no.
Well, that answers that.
I was gonna say.
So here's, here's what our options are. The people come in on Wednesday to work here. They come in for ten o'clock, they go home at noon. Or we have people who come from other towns, so it's not, everybody doesn't live in town. Or we just say, for this year, on the Wednesdays, the Wednesday before Christmas, the Wednesday before New Years. I'm sorry, Wednesday, yeah, before New Years. Oh, and the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Just don't come in.
So our offices will be closed Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday.
Holiday.
For both Christmas.
For Christmas. For Christmas, for Christmas, not for New Years.
Okay.
For New Years, it will be closed Wednesday.
Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday and Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Those typically close off.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't count the Thursday.
You're saying Wednesday and Friday?
We're, uh, Wednesday is New Year's Eve. And Friday is the day after New Years, and don't they get the day after, do they get the day after New Years?
No.
Okay, so.
No.
Oh.
Town offices are closed on Thursday.
I already, yeah.
Friday is.
Well, New Years. New Year's Day is Thursday, so we get Friday.
Right.
I think that the thing about this is. I haven't seen us hit this where these holidays are all on Thursdays.
Well, it's gotta happen every seven years.
So, yeah, I haven't done this seven years. So.
Alright, well, let, let's do it as it's coming. So. For Thanksgiving. They have Thursdays off anyway, so we would give them Friday, Friday off. That's in the contract.
That's in the contract.
Yeah.
You wanna give them Wednesday also, all day?
Yes.
So they have Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I'll make that motion for, for Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'm sure we're gonna hear about this though.
You know.
I could think of a couple right off.
These people, first of all, these people work hard, and most of them are getting extra. Uh, and to come in for two hours is like, okay. Roger. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that's Thanksgiving. Now we're going to Christmas. I can tell you this. In my family, because I always worked on Christmas Eve Day in my career, my husband made me promise a few years ago. To never work on Christmas Eve Day. Right, just because it's Christmas Eve. So in this case, do they come in at ten and leave at noon or whatever on Christmas Eve Day?
Just a question, if Wednesday is off all day, is that, is that paid or unpaid?
It's paid.
Paid, and is that budgeted for? Do we budget that for all employees?
They're all.
That's all.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's all covered. Good question.
I'll make that motion. I'll take.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'll take the.
You're, you're both ears. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Motion passes. Now we come to New Year's Eve. Day.
So they would get Friday off anyway.
Yes.
So the question is, are they gonna get the?
Are they gonna come in Wednesday?
Are they gonna get New Year's Eve off?
They're gonna get New Year's Eve.
On Wednesday.
I have one more thing to add. How much business do you, how much business do you think we trans, we, we have on the days before those holidays?
We shouldn't probably even talk about that, because when you talk about that, then all hell breaks loose on one of those days.
I'll, I'll make the motion because I'm not gonna have to hear about it.
I'll second it, cause Roger won't have to hear, but.
There's no drinks going on here either. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We know that this is an unusual situation.
Yeah.
Um, but we.
And. It's an exception.
It is an exception.
Does the motion say adjusted twenty-twenty-five?
Oh, it, well, it's only, only when.
It's only for this year, only this year.
So seven years from now.
We would never.
Still around, you'll be dealing with it.
Yeah.
Alright.
And we didn't hit Christmas, are we talking about Christmas?
No, we already.
We got Christmas, yes.
Christmas as well.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday.
Yeah, just.
And Monday.
Not Monday, not Monday, no, Monday is only on Christmas, yeah.
Just Christmas.
Okay, and Monday.
Okay, moving merrily along.
Yes.
Alright.
Approval of tax refunds, do we have any? As a no.
Really?
Agenda for upcoming board of select meetings. Um, I've already met.
As they say.
Smart aleck.
Sick yo-yo, screw it, kid, you're on your own.
Do not get up yet, okay? So, what I would like to do is, um, and I have had, I have met actually with Tess. Um, but she's not official till tomorrow. I've met with her to talk about some things related to the role, et cetera. We're putting together packets for Tess and Al, I've met with Al as well. Um, separately. And packets, uh, about their duties, bringing them up to, to date on different things we've got going on here, but in addition. Um, on the Kale Rock. Issues, another package, the same, the Kale Rock ones are also being done for the Selecton and Willington because they have new selection too. So I have already had the opportunity, um, more privately, if you will, to thank, um, Roger for his service. What you may not know is that Roger originally signed up to do this for probably about fourteen months. And he did it for five years, so.
God bless.
Yeah, absolutely. So I was able to do something for him, okay, already. And, uh, and we can't bring alcohol in the building, so, anyway, but Bill. Um, one of the things, uh, I wanted to bring up, I wasn't here throughout all the years that you have served here. Uh, served, um, as a government official in different capacities. Uh, and also, um, the work that you've done in town, okay, some of the improvements you've made. That have made people's lives better. The senior center, the housing authority, work on Norton Hall. You served on the CCM's Board of Directors, which is a hell of a job. Uh, and Secretary to the Board of Selecton. You started out right. Because you started out truly ground up. Okay, so your instincts and, um, the work that you've been able to do here, you've just been able to build on. So there is something here for you. It will come in the mail. Uh, why don't we give it to you and I'll just. Put my fist. Um, on behalf of all of us. Um. We would very much like you to enjoy some time. And, um, and also, we are no longer limited in terms of, um, you know, I couldn't sit and meet with you. Uh, because of the rules, okay, for Selecton. But I want you to come in here and I want you to share ideas, concerns, whatever, in a way you probably haven't been able to. So I would really appreciate that, because I know you've served for so long, it's in your blood. Okay, and your instincts are good. So I would very much appreciate that, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. I started. As a non-affiliated voter.
I started out as an independent.
Bob Akins called me into his office.
Yeah.
And I had ran for, for Selecton as a non-affiliated guy, when I decided to get involved. Before then, the five years before then, or four, four and a half years. What I did was, was I monitored the planning and zoning commission, went to just about everyone, drove them crazy, cause it was just a monitoring. But it was the way that I got to know some of the things that were going on and what was planned. What was going on in the immediate future and what was hopefully planned in the future, so. I, when I'm talking to people about getting involved, I always say, start with the Board of Finance, that's where I remember meeting you. And, and, or the planning and zoning. And you'll get a basic knowledge. But Bob Akins called me in and he said, Bill, he says, I know you're unaffiliated, he was Republican. And he says, I'd like you to get involved, and he says, I think you ought to be in a party. And I never thought I was gonna join a party, to be honest with you. My mother was a Republican, my dad was a Democrat.
Me too.
So, you know, I was happy with where I was, but anyway, I got involved. And Bob, back in eighty-seven, appointed me as chartered chairman of the Housing Authority. And because basically I was chairman for almost ten years, chartered chairman of the Hartford Fair Credit Commission. So that's, I had my feet wet and that was.
Exactly, you had something to build on.
Yeah, yeah. So and then in eighty nine, I was hired as the secretary to the select. Served in that capacity.
Which is a thankless job on my dad.
No kidding.
You can attest to that.
But anyway, my, my heart was into it. I love our community. And uh it's been very re- It's been very rewarding without realizing you're not gonna get patted on the back all the time for accomplishments.
I know the feeling. It's, you, you can make a difference.
Tomorrow will be my first day in thirty four years. I won't be a selectman.
I know. It's going to be, I would think it's gonna be very disorienting.
Now, I gave my keys.
And hopefully a relief. I don't know. You, she's got, okay, so you're gonna give keys to this one.
That I don't think, I haven't tried it. I believe the locks were changed on the office at the senior center.
They were. You don't have a key to the senior center?
Never got a, a key. So that's, you'll have to figure out, I'm assuming those keys you'll go to test.
Right.
And get, that's the only one that I think is outdated here. The other is the highway department, Norton Hall and this building.
I made her a key to the keys. Yes.
Okay.
She's already taken care of what she needs to take care of.
I'll drop mine off.
Okay, that sounds good. That sounds good. Um, so again, I thank you both. Um, it's been nice working with the two of you because I get varying points of view. No committee, um some, a committee of one is pretty much limited by their own horizon. So having counsel from you two, it's been very healthy. And um and like I said, Bill, please stop in because we can talk.
Roger, he can.
Roger, Roger's gonna be vacation. You don't know. Roger's gonna be traveling, okay? And he, I got a feeling he's not gonna be wanting to come in here and sit and jaw with me for a while while he's doing all this traveling. But he does send me pictures and texts, which is good.
Can you take your new recliner with you?
A new recliner, wow.
My latest, new laser voice today.
Celebrating, yeah.
I've got seven fifty three.
Your motion, Roger?
I.
I.
This is the fastest meeting. No. Don't get used to it.
Good night, folks.
Good night.